And I would hurt. That's a good.
I appreciate it. We've got one on Southern Ten. Now, I'm down. I'm working right now. The other ones at baseball. Insurance. So why not? Right, baseball. Um, no, we, so. He has a group of his. He made out. But AK or ten years. And get your.
Well, our, uh, ordinance committee to where I want to stand for the federal leaders.
On the United. And to the Republic, the pollution dam. Foundation under. Into this. And have this.
Everybody here and. Everybody is a citizen. The. Well, proud. Not sure we have enough. I'm not sure we have time to get to. But so we'll go and move on to our pool of minutes on, uh, June six. So we're gonna take a motion. And will we have the minutes of June sixth? Second. Thank you. Any, uh, other comments on?
Dan. Pardon.
Thank you very much. Um, so. The rest of us all in favor? I, I oppose. And on to our. Or this the fund or. All employer contributions.
Yes, so, um. This year when we, the joint meeting when we discussed within the pension together with the board of finance and the council. Based on past history, we have the pension not funded.
Yes.
We decided that we don't wanna be in the same situation. Uh, it's better to fund it each year based on the actual determined contribution. And everybody decided around the table, well, yeah, while we all know heads and he has a group is very, uh, likely going to support all that.
Yes.
Uh, things could change in the future.
Correct.
Uh. To profit and they'll have the, uh. Flexibility not to fund this hence, uh, you know, we ideally would have liked to include it in charter, but. Got a revision that happened.
Yeah.
And. Started, you know, create an ordinance and bring it to council and fully pass it so that every year. It would, uh. Hire a jury who will go through the computations depending on who's on, in, in the client, the number of people looking at the pallet tables and the year of service. They'll come up with a number saying that you are to put this in the budget so that whenever they retire. Which is gonna happen in, uh, five years, ten years. People have the money to pay. Now, the good thing with this pension is we don't have the one-time payment, uh, option that we took that out, the previous one had and.
Thank goodness.
Which they are a million and a half, two million, but the town had come up with the full amount.
Yeah, we did. So, uh, eight years getting through all that. Yeah. I grabbed where I was at.
This is the language I've attached in the back, uh, Kevin drafted it by. Asked, uh, Jeff to, as always, improve it a little bit. And, uh, we have some language in front of you, uh. Read it, wanna read it, but, uh, pretty much saying that we should. Appoint Ohio actually to use this boy, uh, who determine boy contribution. Uh, or each of the active defined benefit plan, I say each because they, you all mentioned with, with people still in it. Right, right, so it's right on the mouth of each part of that. And then, uh. We make it. That I included in the budget and the board of men and the council. Which, uh. By each of that. Be the general fund when people deposit.
Is that, is that, there's three people left in the pension? That's, uh, police and town employee. That's just police, so there are other, other town employees, uh, it's just three.
Yeah.
Uh, officers left over. Well, that's good. The end of that one.
But that still has the one-time option.
Yes, of course, of course, and I'm sure they will ask you, but I saw the rest now. But I think we're much better shape than we were. Yeah, I forget how many there were eight years ago, but. There was a lot. Yeah, it's a lot less. But we got through it, so, okay, yeah, no, I mean, we talked about this when we talked about the pension. And I, we all agreed to that, and, uh, what do you, what do you folks think? That makes sense, so wh- wh- what happened? For the, you know, information in the past, uh, going back, I guess, eight or nine years now, when we, uh. When I took over as the mayor and we, we didn't have a board of mine, but we were looking at the budget and. We were in debt quite a bit and a lot of the debt had to do with the pension plan as well, uh, was underfunded and not been funded at all over. Many years, over a period of ten years, it might have been a hundred grand put in a couple times, and of course, we go. Uh, with the old pension plan that they were, uh, when they got rid of the pension plan, the folks that stayed in it. Uh, I don't know why they did this, but they, to get them maybe to agree to go to a 41K for the new officers and new town employees. They had a, uh. Which hurt a lot, they had, you know, you could take your annuity payment or you could take a one-time. Buyout, which.
Like the lottery.
Yes, it was kinda like winning the lottery, uh, even the, uh. The office officer got, you know, probably a million plus and they went almost two million at one officer. So, um, with no money to pay. Nothing in the pension fund, so it wasn't a good scenario for about, well, we still haven't finished. But there's three left, so we're a lot better than we were before, so anyway, so that, we don't want that to occur again. And there is no long-some option, but, you know, there is pension payments tonight and, uh, so hence, we thought this would be a good idea.
So I'm very fiscally responsible.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Hey, well, we good with this? Language is good, Jeff.
You accomplished it. I think you accomplished it.
Absolutely, yeah, so it's good, so, yeah, okay. So what are we, we gonna send this to them?
Yeah, um, next time with the council, we're gonna have to get that other commission from the ordinance committee and the other two, we just can't apply and. He's having more.
Yeah, right.
Their line of counsel, Chris, is okay. Yeah, I wrote it to me and I tweeted, so.
Take that, right, Jeff, as far as everything? Yes, great. Yeah, that's right, we have that in the charter, right?
Yeah.
Alright, good. Alright, cool, yeah, so now, right, they want to make a motion to move this forward, I don't.
That's clear.
The consensus, yeah, we're all on board. Send it forward. Yeah, we're sending for it to ourselves, we'll disagree when we get to the council. We're, we're okay here. Yeah, later. We're good. What do we got next?
So, just, it, you had asked for this on the agenda.
Yeah.
At the competition that, uh, Jeff. You wanna understand a little bit more about, uh, what's. Creating, uh, whatever we, uh, right, because there are noise ordinance for commercial, industrial, residential. And there's, uh, equipment that you need to buy and the enforcement falls on the PD.
Okay.
So, we, we thought if you understand what problem you're trying to solve.
Yep.
Maybe we can come up with the ordinance to fit what it.
But the one that comes to mind. Specifically for me was somebody approached me and I guess the server and one of the, it's over off of. West Lane, I think it's over there somewhere where, uh. A joining neighbor has an indoor pool, um. So, a- all year round, there is an, I guess, a, an exhaust fan, for lack of a better term, that's on, that's very loud. Particularly in the summer, it's loud, because some of those may be over at this home line. And I guess the folks. That you could change ownership two or three years ago, the, the, the home with the pool. So. There's, I, I know zoning enforcement is trying to talk to the neighbors, the neighbors don't seem to care, um, but the noise is spread out, so we, we. Kinda left with nowhere to go. Um, to, to try and help them, you know, it, I think zoning enforcement didn't really have much to do. Well, you know, didn't have much to work with as far as, uh, you know, ordinances or regulations under planning zoning, so. And that's just. A specific scenario, but I'm sure it could be played out in many different places for, you know, different noise. Especially in residential areas, that, that's the. Yeah. Whatever. So what do you think, Jeff, about we have no, no even way to measure decibel levels? I know we have, though we have, we have some. That we have some decibel levels and some other.
Well, when we had that, uh, particular with the firing range.
Yes.
It's this time, it's PD. Did a couple of, uh, yeah, you know, testing. Make sure. What the disposable sign they were actually below, below the. At the bar, at the range. At the big on cloud, it was up on the hill and PD was firing, they were measuring in the same, but, so, but then a couple of times. Uh, I don't think we have. Yes, it might be the rented, though, somebody has it.
But we rented a part of.
Yeah. So, so that's something we'll have to do, but which is fine.
Yeah.
We will do it, so, um, what I'm hearing is. Mostly for residential.
You think, uh, probably shouldn't be any, there should be, to me, there should be some limits anywhere, even, even if it residential back to the commercial. Um, where it's noisy, uh, we should have some type of limits, I wouldn't think, uh.
Like the.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's an example too, the recent example, the feed plays too, with the noise, whatever the noise was, obviously, I mean, I know that, we know he's working on.
Right.
Which, which is great, but, but there's not, sometimes there's not big corporate citizens like that that care.
But my short has staying willing.
Yeah.
It is a good time to work, but when people with problems, uh. So for example, Ever Source had some construction going on, uh, of, of the people, the neighbors complained.
Yes.
The truck, diesel trucks arriving at six o'clock in the morning and my real life, we have been overturned. So we called Ever Source and had a meeting and they put a stop to it.
Yeah.
Uh, we, same with the bright green.
Yeah.
We reached out and they're spending a lot of money.
Yeah, and that's great.
Totally nice is. So, uh, the two or three, but this particular one, um, sometimes these are neighborhood issues.
Correct.
And they don't get along well, I, I, I'm aware of what you.
That is true, they do not get along, yes, that is true. Or let's put it this way, the people with the noise, making the noise, don't really care.
Yeah, exactly.
But, but.
Yeah, that's selfish.
Yeah, well, it's selfish, but we have nothing to, as a town, to at least say, hey, look, you're above this decibel level. You gotta do something.
Do we have any kind of ordinance or restricts like construction limits that certain on?
Yeah, we have.
We don't have that.
An activity regular that between dawn A M and eight P M. That's in the, uh, Idaho whole, the voice. But, uh. And that pertains only to construction.
Right. Do we have nothing like an overall? Noise level or what, I don't know what other towns do, Jeff, what, what, what do you?
There are probably. Thirty towns or so that have noise ordinances.
Okay.
The statute. Refliers that. If a municipality adopts, uh, noise control ordinance. That it be at least as stringent, at least as stringent. As the state noise plan.
Okay.
Which is in a. Twenty-page, single-spaced rec. So. Uh. To make it at least as stringent, you have to cover a lot of different things that you don't really think about until you actually see the ordinance.
Okay.
And then the measurement procedures is where you get into fights with people. Because you have to have. Properly trained people doing the measurements. You have to have. Adequate. Calibrated, recently tested. Equipment that meets, you know, A N S I and S A E. Regulations. And. We've had a few, we've had a few noise cases, Jennifer's had a few in North Haven. We had one particular where the noise was only like in the middle of the night, it was coming from like the roof of a. Large commercial. You know, Connecticut container, large commercial industrial facility. In, in the neighborhood that's. You know, probably. Five hundred yards. The house, the closest house is probably five hundred yards away. Uh, and there were a lot of disputes about, you know, whether the. Recordings were accurate, eventually they, they, like, made some changes that dealt with it. So, I mean, I can, I can draft an ordinance for you to look at.
Yeah.
So you can see. The types of things that you need to do, but again. It's not like the law says, go ahead and regulate whatever you wanna regulate. The law says if you're gonna have. An ordinance, it has to be at least as stringent as the state plan, and the state plan is pretty tough.
Can I ask, there's. A, a simple cause of action that a property owner can file against another property owner, Ray, no sense. To, to handle the problem without the towns creating ordinance or being involved in it, correct?
Correct, but nobody ever wants to hire a lawyer and do anything on their own, they wanna go.
Seems a little paternalistic of me.
Listen, we deal with it. Neighbor disputes tend not to be noise disputes. Bases on my yard, his tree is hanging over my yard.
Oh, yeah.
You know, his lights are shining into my. Bedroom at night when he comes home and idles his truck at midnight. You know, he's parked, his friends park in front of mine, I mean, it's everything.
Sure.
I get, I get, I get the calls, okay? And. You know, people say, oh, you know, you're not, I was never patient. And you called me in nineteen ninety-three, I would say it's not our problem, it's a private issue, go hire a lawyer, and that's the same thing I tell people today. You know, what did we do? Did we, did our planning and zoning commission? Grant an approval that you have a problem with, you should have appealed. Did our zoning board of appeals grant a variance, you should have come to the public hearing or appealed. You know, what did we do? That you're complaining to the town about? And if the answer is, well, it's not really, but you guys can help. By passing another law. Right? That's, that's. You know, so what are you talking about, ATVs?
Hmm.
No matter what you're talking about, folks tend to think that, oh, we need more law. You know?
Does that state statute have limits, nine limits?
Yes.
It does.
Yes.
Well, can we just basically adopt those?
Who enforces that?
I was gonna say, do we want, uh, it seems like you're, it seems like you'd be opening a rather large.
Well, you have to have a police officer, yeah. And, you know, the. I think I told you the story about how we.
Just go to state statute.
Okay, yeah, that's been our. Our device, and then we turned it without the directions that everybody.
We've got a noise meter, we had an officer trained, and then we had a noise issues. Officer can go off, they, it meets state standard or it doesn't.
I don't think it does involve.
The problem is that most of the complaints.
Yeah.
You see, you have noise zones. Right, A is residential, B is commercial, C is industrial. So. You have decibel levels in each zone. Then you have exemptions and exclusions.
Plus you have.
Like an unamplified human voice. Cannot violate a noise ordinance. So if you're not allowed about.
Really, absolutely. Bring this in, correct?
We want to. Throw on a. Loudspeaker, that's a story, but they're just a big ball.
So with, with the state statute now, okay, so who, who enforces that? The state statute?
I gotta give my guys all those meters. Cause we're getting complaints about motorcycles and. So they'd have to go see where the motorcycle was.
So you would go to that town?
Well, the state law.
State.
Yeah.
Well, who, state police?
No, we.
You guys, for that, for that, but how about the rest of it, how about the factory noise, how about?
The state enforces it, the state noise.
Are they really gonna come? It's the state of Connecticut, we know they're not coming.
And twenty twenty-two, deep no longer, it used to be you had to send your ordinance to be approved by deep in the government.
Yeah, so they don't.
They're not involved.
Well, there's my point, they, they're.
But we went through an exercise to get those meters.
Yeah.
They got lost, they, I don't think we ever used.
When we get the meters?
Oh, I said DMV.
Oh, DMV, DMV did, yeah, yeah, well, I mean, that's DMV.
I was looking for a place that passed the block, if somebody called up for their. What we state standard, or you know, that's what I'm.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean, part of my concern is that we're gonna do this potentially noise ordinance, adopt what state has. Scares me, um, but at the same time, we only have. I mean, in a year or two, I think we've had a couple complaints about an ATV and now this one complaint about this, the, the. The feed places, I think, is a little different, cause that's. But my concern is, is that we're going to. Put this in for the whole town. For maybe two or three complaints and. It's just, you know, uh, my concern is, what are we going to create? Absolutely.
I'm not trying to say adopt the state. Statue, I'm saying, it's already there, we're already stuck with it, and if there's a big issue, we just refer to that.
Well, like Kate said, if there's a big issue, bring a private nuisance action. I had a case where I defended a planning and zoning commission. That approved a, uh, family, there was a family vineyard in Warrick. And they wanted outdoor dining. And planning and zoning approved it. And the neighbors were really upset. So, one of the neighbors, who it turns out I know very well, I didn't know, like, I lived in the town, unfortunately. I get this call from the property owner. Saying that our crazy neighbor. Put huge loudspeakers. Pointing at our property on the boundary, his side of the property. And he's blasting music. I wanna make a noise complaint. So I, he tells me the guy's name, oh, I can't be the same, I can't be the same, I can't be the same guy, then I look at my. Right, the client too. So this guy is a, yeah, so I call him, I was like, what are you doing? He goes, yeah, he's got a thick Boston accent, he goes, yeah, the chimes. Yeah, they're religious chimes, they need the ordinance, the ordinance excludes religious chimes.
I'm sorry.
I, so I called the guy back, I said, can you, can, so the place, oh my god, there are religious chimes. Yeah, record it, and it, and it was so loud, nobody wanted to be outside listening to that. So I told the guy, you gotta get a lawyer, it's, it's, it's not a noise ordinance violation, but it's definitely nuisance, yeah.
But, 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 but we don't have to be as strict as the state, we can make one less.
No.
Didn't we have to follow them?
You can be more.
About them regulations, really.
We can have everyone, you know, holding their hands like this and a whisper for the whole. Definitely want.
Well, huh, so, all right, so, so, so we don't do anything, so now, there's a problem, so now, the state won't come, so we just say, oh, screw it, go, go sue your neighbor. It definitely makes no sense.
When they had that huge party over on Orchard Road.
Yes.
My neighbors were upset by that.
Yes.
Why don't you have to be drafted ordinance?
Yes. Yeah, that would be good.
Like a real basic.
Yes.
As basic as basic.
I'm not, I'm not looking. Okay, yeah.
And you'll take a look at it and you'll say, yeah, you know, this might work, or, God, no, this is too much regulation.
I mean, that would help with the Orchard Road situation too. Some you could.
I'm sure there were other violations of other things, right? I don't think it was just a noise issue, right?
No, well, that, well, the, the first time they did. Air being made things one and the other one.
Underage drinking, like, there were probably many other things that could have stopped that for that incident.
I have, we have. We had one where somebody had a drone that was playing music.
Oh, the drone.
And they were, the neighbor put his behind up. With bad words on it. So this guy then flying his drone over the property, kind of like A C D C music. And then they would call.
I was gonna say, I, I, I think I got an option for that one.
During, during COVID, people spent too much time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we know that.
They got crazy. They tend to think their true colors came out, but.
Yeah.
They did a lot of crazy, they, it was like, what can I do to mess with my neighbor?
They were bored, they had nothing else to do.
Falls to the town increase during COVID.
Yeah.
They're looking over the window and saying.
Oh, is it doing? Yeah, cause they're home, they're not at work.
Light got really big.
Oh, light.
Oh, yeah, people were out working in their property, they looked across the street, they got all the hoop house complaints.
Oh, yeah.
Hoop house, it's disgusting, I can't, oh my god.
The Orchard Road, fortunately, the town reached out to Airbnb.
Yeah, they did, it was correct, that works, that works.
The owners did, right?
Yeah.
So now we can regulate short-term rentals, we have. The ability from a zoning perspective to regulate short-term rentals now, so the Airbnb issue is solved.
The issue with this particular neighbor. Can't send the PD because. Neighbor that has signs and all that, he's done here.
What, we can shoot the police? Well, that's a whole other problem.
No, 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 but private property. Don't enter all this other stuff.
Well, if you have a noise ordinance, you can.
So, yes, so.
That's what I need to.
If you just send the PD, I mean, I wish I could talk with the chief that community relations officer.
Yeah.
And go and talk to them, but there are some folks who would say, you know what?
I think they did that already. Yeah, I think they did, I think they did do that already.
The other thing.
And that's with the neighborhood.
Be aware of, and I'm not saying that we're only a good kind of town, I get the sense that it is, but you guys know the town a little better than I do. If you, if you have a regulation.
Yep.
There are people. That will read the regulation and it will give them ideas. And the reason I say that.
Religious chimes.
There is a town that I do a little bit of work for in Kirkville County. Where after they pass the ordinance, there's an exclusion for lawn mowers.
Oh.
The guy mows his lawn every night at like eleven. The neighbor nuts.
But it's not a violation?
He's got the lifetime on the mower. And he's big guy. Headphone on. He's dancing. Not a violation.
Well, they always didn't put a time limit on.
Coincidence that it happened right after the ordinance.
A time limit, huh?
Because this guy was like, I'm targeting, man, I was.
I, I'll bet you ten dollars to dominance that. If we bet that, I could think of three idiots I know. Who are waiting for the opportunity.
I'm sure there's more than three.
If we were to pass something, I don't, two months from now. A noise ordinance. In this example of the house that now has an indoor pool and has the system. That they kind of grandfathered in. No, she can't.
I don't think so, no.
I mean, how are you gonna slot from now, oh, we have, now we have a new noise ordinance.
The decibel level is different. So, yeah, we'll have to look at that in terms of what decibel levels we set.
Well, that's, that's, that's what I'm looking for, the decibel level for me. And, and times, like a time?
You can, you can do the date of the, the date of your minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, time usually, every, everybody, the debate is, does night begin at nine or ten?
Right.
And does morning begin at seven or eight?
I don't really think that's a broken pick one, I don't know if that's a bigger deal, but.
Yeah, because some of the exclusions and exceptions only apply at night.
Right. So we have a pot.
In this particular example, the neighbor has a fan that blows some kind of, uh. Chlorine.
Yes, it's on the form. It's a pool, it blows out.
It might stop the noise, but it goes and kills its peach trees or something else, I'm not kidding, this damages them. So. That part won't be addressed, noise will get us, I don't know, it's the same thing. Environmental protection. The guy's actually creating an air pollution, hurts the other guy's tree.
Still like it's a slippery slope to creating orders for a whole town for one. Issue.
Well, it's, it's, it's happened many times, they used to come and play and tell me for start, and we never had anything there either back in the day, but. Uh, do something, Jeff, as. Simple as you can make it, but something that we would be able to check that, I'm really, I mean, decibel levels and time of day.
In the town that I live in, that number one noise complaint is fireworks.
Oh, well, that's a day, I mean, that's.
But there's an, except, there's an exception in the. Statue.
For.
It says patriotic celebrations lasting one day or.
Oh, well, there we go.
Except.
Well.
But it doesn't say which day.
Right. Right.
So people are like, oh, fireworks, I mean, it's like Labor Day.
I bought that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's patriotic, just not, it's patriotic.
You know, it's been eleven o'clock, it drives my dog crazy and they can't do anything about it.
Well.
I'm I'm patriotic.
If you say.
Going off anyway.
It's election day.
I get it, I know. I'm usually not a fan of more laws and ordinances, but this one I think I am, I don't know, but let's just see. Look, yeah, and see where we all think. Typical. Not fair, really, but.
Good.
Yes, sir, let's next.
And then the next one, courtesy of, uh, absolutely, so. Of residents have been stuff within. For this public act, twenty-two dash eighty-one, section thirteen, I have the act. You know, material there, yeah, it is, uh, pretty much says that, um. You know, abatement of property taxes or property use for childcare, with their life insurance. That can only buy person versus organization. And and the government body has the right, you'll be all out of it, then how you wanna go with it. So I, I did, I asked Joe to, and if you look at, she have paper in the back.
Yeah.
There are two businesses actually registered. In town, Creative Kids Inc. And Educational Play Camp. So just to give you a sense, those two pay, uh, real estate and personal property taxes. Twenty-two thousand and seventy thousand, total of ninety-two. The known home daycare, there are quite a few unknown ones, we don't know, right? Um, there are four of them that they were able to find. So obviously, they don't speak any personal property because they're not paying their kids. They're seventy-eight thousand in total, I'm sure they have a struggle.
So, so speaking of what we just spoke about, so we do this. I I'm gonna watch a couple of kids at my house now, so, yeah, no taxes for me, uh, you know, I I mean, I just see that, we gotta have a license, right?
Yeah, they do, we're saying.
They gotta be licensed?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I just, like, that's another door that's opening, that's might not be good, but I don't know.
Keep this, Jeff, are other towns doing this? Do you know of?
Not a lot.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Some of them are on it, it's pretty good still.
That's new, I'm gonna.
You know, some towns, not a lot of them, so.
It's the unknown ones that will come forward, and how many are those that?
Maybe we wanna know that.
Well, we should, we probably.
Find out from the state how many have licenses.
Maybe we should.
Just gonna say, we should be able to find.
Yeah, the state. Should know, right? So they would be like.
Have to search engine, you could.
Exactly.
Environmental protection should have a right license.
Yes.
Yeah, let's just see how many there are first, you know. I I, there, there's gotta be more than four, you know, right, with homeless, I would think.
I would think so.
They don't last long, historically.
Yeah.
Usually it's a mother with her kids.
Yeah, 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 for a while.
When they grow up, it's.
Yeah.
If we did do something with the license folders, would it be too complicated to make a percentage like you do at a home office, I use twenty-five percent. Probably how it'll have to do a percentage of.
That I think.
Actual, you know, day care.
If you're gonna do it as tax abatement per se. Usually that's only for a certain period of time, and normally it's only for new businesses that start, not ones that are currently existing, at least, I mean, that's.
That's our. That's our commercial tax abatement, yeah.
So I would look to try and do something similar, um, so we're not recreating the wheel and then they're, they're part of it. But I believe that also has certain dollar amounts attached to it and things like that.
Right.
Um, I'm not saying, no, I think we just need to look at a little bit more and say, you know, okay, it's gonna be for new only, it's gotta be X number, you know, just so we. Form something in there, and, you know.
I think this is more a hundred percent to lower the cost of childcare, I think that's what the.
Yeah.
State move was about, it wasn't so much about developing more businesses, but making it cheaper. The other thing we have, we already, uh, passed an ordinance. That nonprofits can be taxed free, it's a real state if it's used. And I don't know if you don't already as a nonprofit, but like the YMCA operate stuff. They have childcare facilities, they don't pay any property taxes, they're not, but they're homes, I don't think they're all homes, they're homes, but I know the top to work on structure.
Well, the thing is too, so you're making that, so let's, let's take, making daycare more affordable for who? These are the people providing the daycare, so I I guess we're gonna make an assumption they're gonna pass that along to the people paying for the daycare, I I think that's a big leap. I mean, they're getting, they're getting a deal, the homeowners for the daycare, and that's wonderful, they have it, and people take their children there, but. You know, I don't, I, we're gonna, I, I don't know, I just said, I.
Let's get an idea.
Yeah, let's see.
There's more, there's four active licenses, child, daycare, family home. Right, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, yes.
There's, there's twenty-two licenses that were issued, but only four are active.
Okay, so it's twenty-two in the town?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch that are inactive.
Inactive, okay.
And two are even.
Right, yeah, you're right.
It's four active.
Four active, that doesn't seem like a lot.
There were a lot more before the pandemic.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I know, I'm gonna get a license, this is past this, I get a license.
Jeff, this wouldn't, this wouldn't cover people doing like homeschooling now, right? It's just totally separate?
No, you gotta be a licensed.
Okay.
Uh, child, daycare, family home.
That's what I thought, but I learned not to assume anything.
Don't those licenses also limit the number of children they can care for at a time, like. Twenty, for ten kids or thirty kids.
Depending on your space, yeah.
Probably space, right?
The number, we have to have a certain number of people per child.
So then we get it, not only providing a tax of any amount of space, but also the number of children they. Cause the, the person taking care of three children get the same arrangement as the one they taking care of thirty children.
That's what it sounds like here.
Statute doesn't differentiate.
Right. So you got two kids in the house.
It'd be a hundred one.
Or you got two kids in the house and you're getting, uh.
And then we get, right, maybe you get a payoff spot or not.
Well, that's the question, like, that's what I don't think they, you know, as many state statutes, not a lot of fourth thought. Sounds good, I guess, when they're sitting there on the floor voting on.
Statute allows it to do, thanks for demanding.
No, right, no.
These are what their real estate taxes are? The home daycares for one year?
It says, yeah.
Total taxes homeowner. On daycares.
That's not a lot of taxes for meal.
Well, is that the prop, is that the?
It's not worth it to the rich.
Is that the property tax?
That's the big.
That's the regular property tax? That doesn't make sense. I mean.
It could be four, you wanna build a.
Those numbers come with Jeff.
Yeah.
Well, like. The Somerset Drive one, that's just a, I mean, I know. Twenty-three thousand. What the heck is that, right?
Oh, no, it's a big house, they got a little.
You know that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but still, what's the mill rate?
Twenty-nine, twenty-five, six now, that doesn't seem right.
No.
Kind of looking at it off to like a million nine hundred.
No, that.
I think the, are the correct figures and all that.
That does not seem, you're, you're, that's a good point, that does not look at all.
We can get those numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, that seems to bother me. No, you're, no, you're right, they're paying, they're paying quite the tax bill, and where am I gonna go with that?
Pay that much, it'll be a fun.
The property with the la, I'm looking up where.
Yeah, with what?
Property with the largest tax bill.
Yeah.
It has an assessment, uh. That number's not right.
Yeah, that's a, I do.
It has a value of four, six, seven.
Oh, no.
Seven, three, twenty, seven.
No.
You're talking about the taxes ought to be like a hundred pounds.
What I was gonna say, yeah. No, no. No, no, they're, they all don't look. Right? They look way too high. Well, more than double, right? Let's get the numbers first. Let's see what.
Yeah.
What do we wanna do? I'm gonna think about it, talk about it next time, we gotta come back to the noise ordinance thing.
You know, let to the next.
Yeah, that's what I would do, granted.
I don't know off the top of my head, what the, what is, that we do for businesses, the abatement, so we can see what the scale is and stuff like that over five years.
Oh.
Yeah, just that we have an idea.
Formula will be.
Yeah, we're gonna do a formula, it should be consistent.
Oh, they sure be, it's a business, right?
Yeah.
I mean, daycare is still a business.
Right.
Well, they make it somehow, maybe a little learning. Uh, no, they can't be, right? Right, they're way, they're way high, they're double. No, I know, I mean, I know that one couldn't be that high. I mean, you know, that's, they're wrong on my tax bill, we're gonna hope they're gonna double. That's what we got for being up here, we double our tax bills, that's, that's, that's the deal for voluntary.
Yeah.
That's what happens, no.
Yeah.
You didn't know that, did you?
I mean, I feel like that should have been just both of them aboard.
Well, why don't we tell you when you're here already? They need to tell you ahead of time, that's not, that's not fun, that's. Anyway, okay, so next time we'll carry that, so motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second, second, hold the paper?
Aye.
So. Thank you all.